Good evening. It's six o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is, the date is April 25th. It's a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners, and we'll start off with a moment of silent reflection, if you will. Thank you. Now, if you would join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank. Quorum is present.
Thank you. Next up is correspondence. This evening, we have one piece of correspondence from Iosco County. It's a resolution requesting policymaking representatives' support to improve and strengthen the public behavioral health system, health safety net system. I am looking for a resolution to receive and place on file.
So move Gross.
Support Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are any opposed? Same sign. The resolution passes. Next up is the call to the public. We have two calls to the publics. The first one is three minutes in duration. The second one later in the meeting is two minutes. If you should have given the clerk a card if you wish to speak at the call to public. And I just want to remind people that it is a, it's your opportunity to present whatever information you have that you feel is important to the board to know or to make better decisions on your behalf. With that being said, is, did you receive any cards?
I did. We have three of them this evening. Mr. Mark Fostick from Cohocta.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mark Fostick from the Supervisory Township. And I'm here to talk about broadband tonight. We're going to begin a presentation from Merit about broadband within the county. And I'm pretty sure the data is going to show where a lot of people on the western side of the county realize that the western part of Livingston County is underserved with broadband internet. And that does not mean that there are not other pockets within the county that are lacking broadband internet service. And Cohocta Township contracted with Surf Broadband to bring broadband fiber in the ground up past the township hall north of ways. About 275 houses potentially could get to that. We used a great portion of our ARPA funds to do that. But in our township hall, we were hardly ever able to do, two people could do emails at the same time. It was just so bad. We couldn't do Zoom or anything like that. So I think that data has been to show that. And as I understand it, you guys are looking at some sort of a trunk line going through around the county so that everybody will be within potentially five miles. But I'm not hearing any talk about building out that last mile. As I understand it, that last mile could be one mile, two miles, three miles, and 15 miles to get to those last houses, so to speak. And there's nothing being said about when you go and look for your prices to do the trunk lines, you know, what that last mile cost is going to be to connect. So... So basically, there's five points that I want to make when you guys are going to be instructing your IT department when they're doing that stuff to put together the actual plan of building out the fiber within the township. There we go. Okay. So there's five points. One is, do not put the trunk lines in where there are already other internet fiber lines already in place. Try to figure out a way to bring those trunk lines that provide that redundancy that you want, but don't repeat, you know, don't go over where someone already got lines in there. You need to instruct the IT department to do the last mile construction to all underserved areas first, and then let's look at building out the rest of the county so that we can get that redundancy that you're looking for.
You have 20 seconds.
Okay. Don't seek ownership of the lines. What I understand that you want to do when you put the trunk lines in, if someone taps in, you want to charge fees to do that. I would say, don't do that. It's just going to get passed on to the ultimate end users, the customers. I would say, seek out and contract with internet providers willing to connect with rural and underserved areas, especially if those companies are willing to put in their own capital.
If you would finish out your points, I'll give you.
Five is real short. Time, the timeframe to do this is critical. So I would have your IT team work as time is on the essence. Faster the better, because as long as we, longer it takes, the more expensive it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Clerk Conley, next.
Nick Fiani.
Nick Fiani, Genoa Township.
Good evening. I just wanted to introduce myself. I find myself fortunate to know many of you already, but I am Nick Fiani. I am a candidate for county commissioner, so I do hope to serve as your colleague within the near future. I am running on the Republican side of the ticket. I find myself to be a fiscally conservative, pro-life candidate. And again, I'd like to thank you all for your public service, and I hope to serve alongside you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Sharon from Fowlerville and Conway.
As gentlemen, just before, I am also here to express the importance of broadband. So I'm here to express my passion, as well as my interest, as well as I believe the dire importance for broadband expansion within Livingston County, especially in Conway Township. Just as the band before us spoke about the importance of broadband expansion, I believe that Conway, according to the Merit study that I reviewed, is not showing just how important it is. So me, I, to talk about myself, I have been a longtime Livingston County resident, and I have lived in Conway Township for a long time, begging for internet, knowing it will never come, because it just doesn't make financial sense. Well, a few years back, back in 2017, my township came up with a proposal, $6 million or something to expand internet. Ridiculous to impose the taxes. Just doesn't make sense. And at that point, everybody seemed everything was okay, and everything was defaulted to 5G as being the future. Well, 5G is an infrastructure. It's not building. It's not something that's going to build wealth in an area. And I believe that that is why we should have more focus going towards Conway and areas towards the west of, west side of Livingston County. Because at this point, I don't see us getting internet past that at that point. But I believe that with these funds, with this study, that we can expand and we can get more people connected. Because at this point, that a lot of people are more convinced they will receive paved roads in Conway before they'll ever see broadband expanded. And I'll stop right there. I'll just be brief. Don't want to overlap what he said, because we're neighbors.
But thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. So we'll switch over to Zoom, and I can't read the name, but there's someone in the upper left-hand corner. Is it Linda?
Yeah.
Are you referring to Linda Walker?
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, bear with me. I don't have internet at my house, so I'm on my cellphone. And I'm the Unadilla Township Supervisor, and about 15 years ago, we were promised fiber to our police and fire departments. This still has not happened. We're one of the only townships that's not connected. And I'm strongly encouraging you to use funds to get us connected. I think that broadband connection would be preferable to the microwave or whatever's being discussed, because it's my understanding there's only 12-foot clearance above trees. And so I think that would be too unreliable. Might be okay for a temporary fix, but we definitely need broadband in Unadilla. I think that you should address the underserved areas first, which is primarily the west side of the county. And I was able to look at an artist's rendition of the proposed loop, and it was going down Kane Road. I think that's a bad choice, because it's too far west. In fact, half of Kane Road, the west half, is all Inham County. And so it doesn't make sense to go that far west. I think it should come down Bull Run. That would be central to our township. And it's my understanding that Surf Broadband's already going down Bull Run. So I didn't know if you work with them or not. I plan to talk to somebody about that, but we would really, really appreciate getting some connection in our county. Like I said, I'm on my cellphone. I think only one person on our township board has internet, and our citizens are poorly lacking in internet connection. So please consider us and do what you can on the west side of the county, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Next up would be, I think it's the last person, Lori Cowan.
Hi, I'm Lori Cowan from Unadilla Township, and I am the person on the board that does have internet, though it's not the best. It goes in and out. And I just wanted to reiterate that I agree with everything our supervisor Linda has said, and I'm hoping that you really will consider hooking us up to the 911 fiber optic lines, because the other proposal to me, I'm sorry, is subpar and not fair to Unadilla and our residents, and we deserve the same fiber optics that everybody else has. So thank you very much. Keep learning.
I'm going to go ahead and close the call to the public and remind people that there is a second call to the public, albeit it's two minutes in length at the end of the meeting. Moving on in the agenda to item number seven is approval of minutes. We have minutes dated April 12th, 2022. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Motion Smith.
Support Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, support by Commissioner Plank. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. The minutes are approved. There are no tabled items for, from previous meetings, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move Helserman. Motion by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Plank. Any discussion questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Agenda's approved. Next item is, item number 10 is reports. We have the Merit broadband report, but before we get to that, I'd like to see if commissioners had any reports for this evening, please. Commissioner Dric.
I've reduced mine to writing. Really, I've got these at Love Inc. And it was such an eye-opener to go there for a presentation and to learn of all the gaps that the various multiple churches in the county voluntarily attempt to fill. And it's just a terrific program, and if someone you know needs something along these lines, that's the place to send them to Love Inc. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dric. Commissioner Helserman.
Last Saturday, I was privileged, along with Commissioner Gross, to go to a supper where we were honoring veterans. We honored Dale Brewer as auxiliary member of the year for 2022, and he has been very, he's not a veteran, but he's been very active in bringing different activities to Livingston County and helping out the veterans in Livingston County. And also Gary Dunn. He's, was one in charge of Toys for Tots for the Marines. He was recognized as Livingston County Veteran of the Year, and it was good turnout. And it was our honor to honor them, so. So I don't know if Jay has anything more to add.
Thank you.
I echo your comments. It was a very splendid event honoring the veterans, and there were, there were quite a few there, and I think they appreciated our presence.
Anybody else? Commissioner Plank.
Thank you, Chairman. I sent an email to Nathan regarding adding a project to the long list of ARPA requests. After reading a couple of articles about rulings that were made on the use of ARPA funds, it appears Congress actually slipped in a clause or a condition that would prevent the recipients from using the funds for tax reduction or tax relief. But according to the articles I read, that there have been rulings issued by courts that the federal government cannot enforce its unconstitutional tax cut man. So I want to open the doors to discuss whether we could offer a tax holiday or a tax rebate to the residents of Livingston County using the ARPA funds. So you'll see this hopefully appear on the ARPA request on the next round that comes out, and I'm looking forward to having those discussions with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the commissioner reports, and we'll move on to the Livingston County broadband assessment. I would like to introduce our chief information officer, Chris Toby, who will do the honor of introducing all of our esteemed guests tonight, who will be presenting on, on the report.
Good afternoon, Chairman Nakagiri and all board members. First off, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to present today. This is the culmination of about 11 months' worth of work here. Joining me at the table is my counterpart, Mr. David Dennis. He is the Chief Information Officer at Merit. Virtually, we have Ms. Charlotte Ewersdorf. She is the Vice President of Community Engagement. We also have Purret Dag, who is the Director of Marketing and Communications for Merit. We have Alexis Shrubey, who is the Moonshot Program Manager. We also have Ben Feynman, who is the President of the Michigan Broadband Alliance. And last but not least, Bob Stovall, who is Merit Fiber Operations Manager. So today, we have a culmination of a lot of different people that have worked very, very hard over the past 11 months to bring this survey to the table. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Allison Aleppa for her work on this project. She has been instrumental as the county's communication manager. Without her, I would say that our results would be far less than what we've achieved today, and we have achieved high marks on this survey. I would also be remiss if I did not thank our community partners as part of this. We had many great partners, as we often knew here in Livingston County. It shows how we championed that public-private partnership. We had partners like LES A, Pickney Schools, Howell Schools, Fowlerville Schools, Brighton Schools, Heartland Schools, our local Heartland, Brighton, and Howell Chambers of Commerce, and all of you and the rest of our elected officials here. We also had many township and local government partners that helped encourage our residents to take the voluntary broadband survey. When we started this, we knew that the FCC maps were highly inaccurate. We knew that they did not have good information. It was old data. It was based on census blocks. It didn't drive down into the detail level and the accuracy level that we would need to investigate a project of this nature. We also knew that we had, our residents and our community members had a problem with broadband access. We heard this many times over the course of the last two years. We had to pick a starting point in this process to gather the data so that we could make intelligent and informed decisions as we go on in this process and decide what it is that we want to do here in Livingston County. We know that the telecommunications companies have left this up to competitive market forces to drive broadband activity out into our residences and out into our neighborhoods. And we've heard from our residents that we do not have good saturation out into these areas. So these were the points in which we decided we needed good, accurate information, and we needed good people who understood the problems and understood fiber optics and broadband to help us at the table. We came to the conclusion that Merit was an excellent partner. Merit has served public, educational, and library partners for years, and they understand what it means to serve the public and serve their membership. They are a branch of the University of Michigan, and they also understand research. So with much help, they've been able to come up with the report that we're going to be presenting today. It has been a great adventure. Their team has been outstanding, complemented by Ms. Allison Aleppa and all the work that she did on this, and as well as the support from all of you and County Administrator Bird. We know that we have very good results. We know that we have very good data dispersion throughout the county, and that will lead us to whatever analysis we want to move on to next. And with that, I will turn it over to David and Charlotte to give you a introduction to Merit and to the broadband survey.
Thank you, Chris. This is Charlotte. I had to go off the deal because I, my connection became unstable. So how timely that we are talking about broadband data, and I was getting a bad lag. So if I have connectivity issues, someone, please just raise their hand. And Alexis is prepared to take over sharing and will help us drive the duck. So I am Charlotte Beaver-Stork, Merit's Vice President for Community Engagement, and we thank the Board of Commissioners and the Livingston County community for the time this evening to join you and speak to you tonight about our broadband data collection project. In my operational role at Merit, I oversee our member engagement, marketing, and engagement support teams, and strategically, I run our Michigan Moonshot Initiative, which is a statewide initiative focused around assessing and addressing the digital divide for Michigan communities. So as Chris mentioned, we brought a mix of folks on the Merit side tonight. We've got a number of individuals from our executive team, as well as our Moonshot team, and Ben Feynman from the Michigan Broadband Alliance. In the room with you is David Dennis, and David is a resident of Livingston County, so he's my proxy. Otherwise, I would be there, but he asked to come to the meeting himself as a resident of Livingston County in order to represent Merit. So I thank David for doing, through the high level of what we'd like to share with you tonight. David will start with a little section of...
Charlotte, we may want to have Alexis bring up the presentation, because you're cutting in and out.
Okay, Alexis, can you, can you hear us?
Okay, I'll continue talking while Alexis tries to get the presentation. Do I have audio?
Right now, you do, yes. If you want to go to the next slide, I can just kick into, you know, the introduction here. Okay, so I'll talk about who we are, Merit, Merit Network. We are, well, first of all, thank you for having us tonight. And I'm David Dennis, the CIO for Merit Network. I work with Charlotte and the teams on some of these Michigan Moonshot projects. My team manages IT software development, and also their geospatial information systems, our GIS systems, which are part of these broadband studies. So Merit, we are the statewide research and education network for Michigan, established in 1966 as a joint venture between University of Michigan, Michigan State University, and Wayne State University to connect their research computing. And since that time, we've connected all the public universities in Michigan, as well as a majority of K-12 schools, public libraries, and other public sector organizations. If you go to the next slide, you'll see, really, our focus and our mission is connecting organizations and building communities around the state. We provide a variety of network security and community services for those public sector institutions. And if you go to the next slide, you get kind of a sense of the size and scope of our network. We manage about 4,000 miles of fiber optic infrastructure around the state. We own and operate that infrastructure. So we provide a vast middle-mile network. We believe the highest performing network in the state. And then we're the last-mile provider to those schools, universities, libraries, and other public sector organizations. So we feel like we've done a very good job around the state in delivering great service on those campuses. But what happens when those students go home to their communities, don't necessarily have the best internet to fulfill their educational missions at home, as well as what's going on with economic development in those communities? So if you go to the next slide, that's really what inspired our Michigan Moonshot Initiative. And, you know, this is the way that we're helping communities get activated and empowered to determine what are the needs in their communities locally, and how do they get activated to affect change for those communities? We talk about what we're able to do under those programs. It's a variety of data collection, policy, and consulting, as well as helping communities to understand how they're going to build, run, and operate their networks and secure their networks going into the future. So I've been a resident of Howell since 2002, and so I was, you know, personally pleased to hear when Merit was selected by Livingston County to do this study. Before I turned it over to the team that did the study and talk about the results of that, I just want to share, you know, personal anecdote of what it's been like. You know, I live only a mile from downtown, a relatively well-populated area, and yet, even for my own family, the internet is intermittent. It hasn't been great. And I think back to the beginning of 2020, when a lot of us were forced to go into telecommutes and remote schooling and whatnot. And that very first day, my boss loves to tell this story, our CEO, Joe Sowaski, of the very first day of us starting telecommute, we were all getting onto a WebEx meeting, and all of a sudden, my internet was just not performing, just not coming up. And I knew my kids had just started remote school for Howell Schools. And so I thought I'd put myself on mute. I go bursting out of the room, and I'm harping at the kids, you know, who's on Netflix right now? Who is streaming? You're ruining the internet. And my colleagues are just laughing at me, because I didn't have the mute activated. But it turned out, it really, no one was streaming. It's just that our little DSL connection at home was completely inefficient and insufficient for the demands of modern life. And so, you know, I really want to commend the board for taking on this project and letting us perform this study. And now I'd really like to turn it over to the experts on the team that are going to talk about what we found. Thank you. Alexis and Purret, would you like to take it?
So this is Ben Feynman. I got a message from Purret that she's, she needs permission to unmute.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much. Alexis, as well, if someone could help her unmute.
Thank you so much, Alexis, as well, if someone could help her unmute. All right, while we're getting there, we, I'm going to give you just a little bit of background information about the survey. We're going to talk briefly about the methodology, how we deployed the survey out to the communities, and then we'll review the results that came back. If someone, whoever's controlling the slides, could go on to the next slide for me. As we're talking about this, I do want to just do a little bit of a level set definition here about broadband. So when we're talking about broadband in the context of this survey or any of the results that come back, we are using the federal definition of a fixed broadband connection, and that's 25 down and three up. As we're talking about this, essentially, although that's what the Federal Communications Commission defines as broadband, more realistic definitions, as we have seen, to be able to now, with David's point, support video conferencing, schoolwork, telemedicine applications, and video streaming. More realistic bandwidth needs are creeping anywhere between 120 and 100, 100 symmetrical connections. So as we're talking about broadband in this sense, keep in mind that we're talking about the bare minimum threshold to be able to function on the internet. If you could go on to the next slide. This gives us a little bit of information. I know David had mentioned that we had done some of these surveys before, and Charlotte was also going to talk through this. There's a handful of these that we've done throughout the state of Michigan. We began this in 2019 with a pilot with 6,000 K-12 students throughout the state of Michigan. And we've also done broadband data collection, survey data, sentiment analysis, and analysis documents for, we're closing in on about 10 or 12 different counties. And one thing that I will share with you as we are going through this process, a lot of the results that came back for Livingston County are in no way outliers. They are not surprising. They are not shocking. They are fairly in line with what we have seen from every other community throughout the state of Michigan. So the problems and challenges that we're going to describe and address as we are going through this are things that all of your neighbors and all of your other fellow Michiganders are thus far in our data collection and analysis also experiencing as well. If you'd move on to the next slide. David did mention, and Chris, Toby also gave us a little bit of insight into this. So what we wanted to do is quantify availability and demand and produce unbiased granular household-level broadband access maps, visualizations, and resident sentiment to be able to produce data to inform infrastructure planning, to potentially support grant applications, and to also just have a mark of delineation between the picture of what's happening on the ground in Livingston County and the difficulties with the federal overstatements in the maps. And later on in this presentation, when we're going over the results specifically for Livingston County, we're going to demonstrate that there is a vastly disparate amount of residents who have broadband access than is actually recognized and reflected in federal maps. And as Chris mentioned, the reason for this is the FCC produces these things called Form 477 maps that delineates households that are served and households that are unserved. And the challenges with these are that if one house in an entire census block has broadband internet access, then that entire census block is counted as being served. So as we will see later on, even if one house is served, there are many areas where the majority of residents actually are not. Another challenge with this is that the data is carrier self-reported. So these can be laggy, or sometimes the carriers don't really report at all. And sometimes the carriers overstate. And it also is not only carrier self-reported, but it's carrier self-reported whether they serve a census block or intend to serve a census block within a number of years. So there are a lot of challenges and ways that this can not really be granular enough to help plan for infrastructure the way that you might want to do in the county. We also.
Parette, sorry, this is Chris. Can you explain how those maps are developed from voluntarily contributed telcos?
Well, that's exactly it. There's no requirement to produce this information. It is all, as the incumbent providers are producing this information, it is voluntary. And as I mentioned too, it's not only whether they serve a census block, it's also whether they intend to serve a census block within a number of years. So the results that we're getting today are results from actual citizen science respondents and open platform speed tests. So it's all verifiable data. Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Oh, could you go back for me, please? Thank you. We also wanted to gather resident sentiment about broadband usage, the way that it may or may not impact quality of life. We wanted to understand just a little bit about residents' positions regarding not only broadband service, whether they would want it or not, but a little bit of the price sensitivities and the reason in the region. And then with this, we produced an executive summary, a very deep level top line report that we have provided to the county. And then we also provide some databases and a lot of visualizations about this. So if you move forward again. The other thing that's important to note here is that we wanted to make sure residents' language or their connectivity or lack thereof did not impact their ability to participate in a survey. So as we went through this survey, we developed English and Spanish language versions of multiple things. So we had websites that explained the survey, how the data would be used. We had a paper survey that was available by mail with request. We had a low bandwidth online survey for people who were participating just via cellular device or cellular connectivity through a tablet. We had an online survey for connected residents that was the full survey. And then we also had SMS text surveys if someone wanted to participate that way. The residents who are connected at the full fixed internet definition were then asked to complete a speed test. So we understood not only that they were connected, but the speeds that they were connected. And Chris also mentioned that participants were recruited through a community partner outreach program. So a majority of the outreach and the engagement in this community was conducted both through Allison and her outreach efforts, and then in partnership with a lot of the community partner outreach. We also did direct mail and email, and then there were a large number of media advertisements, communications, and press releases. And as we go forward, I just want to pause for one minute. I know that we're not talking about the survey data yet, but this is a one good point to say, number one, your residents are highly engaged. They are highly responsive, and the results, the survey results that you got back are very strongly statistically significant. So in general, for a community your size, a, what we would consider just a statisticians, a statistically significant response rate would have been about 3%. Livingston County got the highest we have ever seen in any community throughout the state of Michigan, and you were at 8.5%. So essentially what that does, you may hear this term margin of error. So you plus or minus a small percentage with any of the answers, and that's very normal when we're doing statistical analysis. And a very strong, extremely strong, or pretty much best case scenario for margin of error in any study is going to be between 4% and 8%. Obviously, the smaller the percentage, the better. But 4% to 8% is considered very statistically strong and significant. I have goosebumps because Livingston County's margin of error was 1.2%. So that right there tells you, number one, all of the efforts of the community of Livingston County, of your partners, was excellent. Your community is also very engaged on this topic, and I'm sure that's something you're probably already aware of. Okay, we could go on to the next slide. These are available. Chris, I believe you have the reports for people who want to look at this data later, correct?
We have the executive summary and the actual report out on the website as we speak.
Perfect, perfect. So I'm going to go through these very quickly. There's two slides here that just demonstrate which township or city, the total number of households, the number of responses we got back for those households, what that response rate percentage is. And then we also see in each one of those communities, the fraction without broadband at that very low bare minimum threshold of 25.3, and then the fraction without broadband at 120, which is actually a more realistic operational definition of broadband. So we can go ahead and flip to the next slide, and I'll just pause here for one second. Again, you can look up this information for your community in the places that Chris has mentioned. And then if you want to flip one more, please. In the survey, the data that we collected was a way to link the participants to their speed test values. We collected street address, number of residents at the address, the number of children under 18 at the address, the number of individuals taking college or university courses, the ISP service delivery mode, satisfaction with that ISP service, their speed test results, price willingness to receive service, the application needs for the household, so how the household might use internet if they had it, and the reason for lack of service at that household, among other things. If you want to flip one more. This just gives a list here of the things that I mentioned. So in the end, we are, end up delivering some maps, some executive analysis, some deep level analysis, some GIS export, so that way the county can continue to do their planning, if that's something that they wanted to do, and a fully merged and clean database. Moving on to the next slide and one more. These are the results for Livingston County. After we cleaned the data, 6,112 surveys were eligible for analysis. Of that, 4,266 residents indicated that they had some type of internet connectivity. 1,856 residents had no connectivity in their homes. 2,536 households with internet access did complete a speed test. And as I mentioned, the margin of error, which is the best that we have seen in any community throughout the state of Michigan, was 1.2%. One other thing that I do want to bring up is that when you're doing data analysis, you want to make sure that every time you have a point of data, you have a way to verify or triangulate that information. So one thing you may notice is a lot of this information, such as I have internet service or I don't, that is user-reported data. But that information can be validated or verified by looking at some of the deeper level graphs and charts that we provided to the county, such as cluster analysis. So if that's something that someone was interested in understanding how we triangulate data, it is through our spatial clustering that the county has. If you want to move on to the next slide. I'll go through just a handful of some of these visualizations, and I know that they're very small, and my apologies for that. But these are also available to look at in more detail. What you see here, this is a heat map of the county. And on the left, we've got the 120 threshold. And on the right, we've got the 25.3 threshold. Each one of these hexagonal areas represents a 1.5 square mile radius. And what you can see is that burnt orange color denotes the speed of either 120 or 25.3. The lighter blue denotes below 120 on the left and below 25.3 on the right. And the dark blue represents no internet available on both of the maps. So essentially, we can see at speeds of 120, there are very few average areas in that 1.5 square mile radius. We took the average of those. There are very few that are at or above 120. We generally see more towards the left side of the county. There's no internet or slower internet speeds. And any of the areas you see that are in the very light gray or white just denote areas that we didn't receive survey responses from. Do you want to move on to the next slide, please? This illustrates very well what Chris was mentioning, the difference between the FCC data and what we have received back from our survey respondents. And one thing that's important about this map is that on the right, this is the FCC breakdown according to Form 477. And this is a binary. This is a yes or no. So there are not gradients of this many people or that many people. So there's a little bit of a difference in the way that these maps have been developed. The map on the left is based on our survey and speed test data, and this is done by density. So anything that's in that very light cream color, 0% to 10% of households in those census blocks have speeds of 25.3. The green is 11% to 25% of households have 25.3, and it goes up and up and up. So what you're essentially trying to compare here is, on the map on the left, which is our survey respondents from this community, the blue 76% to 100% of responding households have internet access at speeds of 25.3. At the same time, that same blue color is represented on the map on the right with the FCC data. And according to the federal maps, anyone in blue has internet access at speeds of 25.3 or greater. Do you want to move on to the next slide, please? This is the same map. This is just broken down by 120. And we can see that is still quite different. And we can move on to the next. And we'll go one more. Alexis, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the numbers and some of the sentiment analysis?
Sure. I've been driving the slideshow, so I hope that my clicks have not, have been on time. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for a wonderful survey. Again, I can't say thanks enough to Allison and to the residents of Livingston County. Without it, we would not have such amazing numbers. As you're looking at the slide in front of us right now, we see a comparison of all of those maps that we just saw, but on a bar chart. And if you look at the dark blue colored bars, those bars are the FCC data, as it is now, in Form 477 data. And the yellow bars are our survey data that has come back to us. And the discrepancy between who does and does not have internet is over and under reported by the FCC is, you can observe quite a magnitude here in these bars. The statistics are listed on the right-hand side. 54% fewer homes have access to broadband internet speeds at 23, at 25 and 3, excuse me, than the FCC reports. In Livingston County, 78% fewer homes have access to broadband internet speeds at 120, our more modern understanding of broadband. And 13% more homes have some connectivity at speeds lower than broadband, meaning that the FCC overestimates the speed that people get. We found slower speeds in Livingston County in our survey. And 41% more homes have no internet connectivity whatsoever. So there's a significant chunk of individuals and households missing in that FCC data who do not have broadband speeds. As we look at resident satisfaction, we see here 39% of residents were satisfied with their internet service provider options at their homes. 27% were neutral, and 34% were dissatisfied. When we talk about satisfaction, you know, is internet fulfilling our needs? It could be better, could it be worse? We've got even split here among, among folks in Livingston County. But overall, people are neutral to dissatisfied when they're asked about their internet providers. In Livingston County, in households with children, 41% of households surveyed in Livingston County reported having children under 18. So 41% of households with children under 18. In those households, only 45% have broadband internet. Only 45% of households with children under the age of 18 experience broadband speeds. In Livingston County, in households without internet, 60% of households with no children report internet access at broadband speeds or higher. This suggests that there might be a homework gap in households with children in Livingston County, and that some students might have trouble completing their homework after the school day ends if they need to do their work online.
I would interject there, too. I think another thing, not only just the homework gap, but the Quello Center for Media and Information Policy at MSU worked with Merit and the Moonshot in that K-12 pilot. And that study demonstrated scientifically that students who don't have access to broadband internet in their homes typically do worse, perform worse on a wide range of metrics and educational outcomes, everything from standardized test scores, intention of going to college, and they actually score. intention of going to college, and they actually score a half a letter grade lower across the board in all subjects. So that puts those forty-five percent of K-12 students at a great disadvantage compared to their connected counterparts.
And I'll skip ahead to this slide and return back to the slide before, just because we are on the subject of the homework gap. And in our top-line report, we have more detailed breakouts like the one that you see on the screen right now. What you're looking at is called a heat map or a cross-tabulation. And it takes a question such as number of residents under eighteen in the home, and it combines it with other questions such as what speeds do people experience in their house? So we can look within a series of questions to see if there are patterns beyond just answering one question like how many people are in the house. It helps us answer the question, do the number of children in a house mean that families have higher or lower speed tiers? And if we look here, we can see that the density in this graph, the dark colors represent more mass in the population, higher numbers in the population. Interestingly, if you look at the the no-internet horizontal bar and the at or above twenty-five-three, which is the bottom horizontal bar, we really see that homework gap appear. In Livingston County, in households with children, people either mostly have internet above broadband speeds, or they lack broadband altogether. So that is kind of how the that that would look in the data. And I'll go return back to the the slide. This is not on the homework app. We're switching subjects here. When we think about why people don't have internet, when we want to find out, are people just not signing up? Is it because they don't have access at their address, or is it because it's too expensive? Or perhaps is it too expensive for the type of service or quality of service available to them? And we have breakouts of this in the top-line report, which I invite everyone to take a look at, but in general, of Livingston County residents that have no internet access, sixty-two percent report that no service is available at their address. So that is a very large proportion of Livingston County residents. And thirty-two percent state that the price for the service is too high. And that could mean that the price is prohibitively expensive, if it's several hundreds of dollars. Or it could mean that people don't want to pay sixty or so dollars for service that is laggy, that does not suit their needs, and that the value for the price is not worth it as well. And it's not that these folks are internet naive and that they don't want internet. Seventy-seven percent of residents with no internet access responded that they are willing to pay between twenty-five and a hundred and one dollars for service. The majority of residents would pay for internet service at their properties if it was available. People in Livingston County answer that they know what the internet is and they want to use it. They just don't have access. And Paret, I'll hand it back to you.
Perfect. So essentially, what we found is that broadband is critical to any community's ability to thrive, to remain competitive, to promote economic development, to stay competitive in terms of education, talent retention, employment opportunities, and obviously talent and population growth or drain. A lot of Livingston County is unconnected or insufficiently connected, even at the lowest level of bandwidth needs. Connectivity data indicates that the problem that exists in Livingston County is much more stark than FCC data that's been established does suggest. And as Alexis mentioned, residents without broadband desire service and connected citizens believe that more provider options are needed to create competition and provide better service. And then I think with that, if you want to go one more. I believe, Ben, are you going to give us a little bit of information here about what comes next, or do we want to pause here?
This is Chris. I think that this would be a good chance to pause and see if our board members have any questions in regard to the survey.
So I would ask commissioners if they have any questions for the presenters. Commissioner Plank.
How old is the FCC data that you used in your analysis? When was that conducted?
I can pull the numbers up, but it's continually refreshed, so I can I can go back to our database and I can send that to Chris, the exact month that it was pulled, but it's the most recent data that's available.
Okay, I didn't know if it was from a few years ago or.
It would have been a matter of months.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
The large divergence between the FCC data and marriage data is this consistent with what you're finding in other areas you've done the study?
Yes, on average, we see anywhere between forty-five and sixty-five percent differential between FCC data and what our survey responses are coming back as.
And to their credit, I mean, the FCC knows that the maps are broken. They've called for a new solution to solve this issue, but until they solve this issue, you know, we feel that we're able to provide a little bit better look at the the situation in the community.
Commissioner Gross.
Is this a, would you say this is a relatively new phenomenon with respect to the FCC, or is this something that there's been awareness out there for years?
Several years. And, you know, I don't know, Ben, or others, if you could comment on how long this has been discussed.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, this is Ben Feynman. So thi- this has been the the method of broadband data collection for, well, I actually don't know how many years, quite a few years, I want to say since about twenty fifteen. It's using what's called Form four seventy-seven. So a- as one of the the commissioners observed, this this is a known issue at the FCC, and they're in the process of solving it. Unfortunately, the the process is is going to happen too slowly to affect the change that you you need to have locally.
As a follow-on, do you have any opinions as to what might be done, if you will, to light a fire at the FCC? In other words, is Michigan unique in this situation, or is this pretty much across the breadth of the country?
It's across the breadth of the country, and there are national broadband leaders, national broadband advocacy groups. There's only one real lobbying organization for broadband, but the conversation has been strong enough that, as David mentioned, the FCC is aware of the problem. They just haven't developed a solution yet. So no, this is, this is absolutely not just in Michigan. I believe Purdue University, just last week, Alexis can comment on this, because I believe she studied with some of them. Purdue University just released a similar map of the entire state of Indiana, and it shows up something that's very similar to here.
And I'd just like to note, thi- this is a known issue within the state of Michigan as well. The 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 state of Michigan currently is has allocated some money to do some additional broadband data collection in the state. Unfortunately, we have some concerns with the methodology and the areas that they're they're going to be looking at as well as the pace. So i- it is something that has visibility at the state level as well, but your your county has done well to do your own data collection and stay ahead of the curve.
As a follow-on, from the appearance of the maps, it's obvious that the rural portions of Livingston County are the most underserved. And I'm wondering, is that a trend that has been discerned across the state as well? In other words, are are the major metropolitan areas over the top with respect to their service, and the rest of us are just following along?
There's a, there is certainly a greater portion of rural areas that are underserved. And essentially, that boils down to a lot, the the large costs of deploying broadband networks to lower areas of population density. However, there are vast swathes of even urban areas where you can have connectivity on one side of the street and lack it on the other. Ben Feynman actually worked on Washtenaw, and we found that there were pockets in within that very urban area of complete disconnection, too. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ben?
Yeah, absolutely. So certainly, as Paret said, the the rural areas are disproportionately affected just due to the lower population densities. But, you know, we have found there there are pockets in the urban areas as well that you might not expect. You know, the the city of Detroit is probably the the most glaring example. Despite being the most urban area of the state, there are thousands of households in Detroit that don't have connectivity. And the other distinction is the the availability of infrastructure versus the the affordability of infrastructure. So there are some areas of the state where people don't have access because they they can't afford the infrastructure that is available versus the most areas we're talking about here, the infrastructure just isn't available at all.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Helsner.
First of all, it sounds to me that Livingston County has done one of the best jobs of of collecting information, and and Allison is to be commended for her work. My question, first question is, what have you learned from the Livingston County way of collecting? And are there ways that that you see could even be better than what we've done?
Paret or Alexis, do you have a comment?
I can absolutely take that, but I would I would almost defer to Allison on this. So I think that the the things that were the chief results within the community are the engagement of all of your municipal and township leaders. So those messages coming from Allison and Livingston County and the toolkits that Merit and the Moonshot developed, and then the deployment of those within the community is probably one of the one of the strongest ways that we have seen people be engaged. So it's it's one thing certainly for an academic or a research and education network to come in and ask residents to complete a survey. You guys haven't, a lot of your residents probably haven't heard of Merit, or they're not very familiar. And for the county to say, please take this survey, that's another level of verisimilitude. That's another level of encouragement. But when you're hearing it from the people that you see in the grocery store and the people that you helped elect and the people who are leading you, and they're telling you how important this is alongside our community partner organizations, and we had things like recreation centers and libraries, and we had small neighborhood coffee shops, and we had churches and, you know, fraternal organizations. And when you have your neighbors talking about this and your schools talking about this, that's really the thing that makes all of the difference. So we can, we can make all the materials all day long and provide that, but really, the the number one key here is how engaged your community was with sharing that out, and that's really due to the engagement and the the assistance and participation of all of your municipal officials. And Allison, do you have, because you and I actually, the response rate in Livingston County was so good, I actually asked Allison to have a side meeting with me so that I could ask her, what what was your secret? What what did you do that we could help encourage other communities to do? So I don't know if you'd have anything to add to that, Allison?
Woody memes, definitely.
Yeah, that definitely helped, but I would reiterate, I think our community partners and just their passion to better our community was something that, you know, we really connected with all of our townships and chambers of commerce and libraries especially, who did such a terrific job that we had such good coverage that our residents were able to participate.
And thank you, Allison. We worked together on on the census, and and she did a fine job on that, too. So in your report, you give some providers, and it, in my view of it, or as I view it, Surf Broadband, I didn't see their name come up in your report, and I know that they're very active, and Iosco and Kahakta Townships. One of the leaders lives in Conway Township and doesn't have fiber to his house. So is there a reason why Surf was not named in your report?
Yeah, so there were, we were absolutely as conservative as possible when responding to any of these surveys. So if it was borderline unclear whether this was a fixed wireless or a non-fixed wireless provider, we didn't include them in the overall data set, but did provide them in the GIS mapping and in the database. So we did, we did have about a hundred of these customers who were not included in the top-level maps, although they have been provided in all the other sources. And the other thing to note, too, is that FreedomNet actually purchased Surf. So as you're looking through this information, you won't find any any mentions of Surf. You will find this data represented as FreedomNet. And I do have, I don't know if it's possible for me to share a screen, but I do have a map that I can demonstrate where those one hundred points that were filtered out of the top-level report exist. So I can, I can show you just a general picture of that, and then I've also sent over some instructions if they want to filter just specifically that information on the county level to see where it exists at.
Thank you. With with these surveys in other places, what were the next steps that other places took? And are there, are you prepared tonight to suggest next steps for Livingston County?
I think that's maybe where I jump in. So let me kind of reintroduce myself in my my role. So I volunteer as the president of the Michigan Broadband Alliance, which advocates for broadband expansion in Michigan. My day job is with a company called Internet Two, which is the nonprofit that runs the the National Fiber Optic Backbone for Research and Education in the U.S. But maybe more relevant, I'm the vice chair of the Washtenaw County Broadband Task Force, and so we we had to struggle with these same questions. And I'm also a resident of Linden Township. And in Linden Township, you know, we're your neighbor to the south of Unadilla, and we were able to build a township-wide fiber optic network a couple of years ago. So all that to say, I have some experience in in terms of the the struggle that you're embarking upon. So now you you have the data that that kind of proves what you what you knew all along, that you you have a a more significant broadband coverage issue than the the national data was suggesting. Of course, the the challenge now is is what do you do about that? And so, well, we we can't be prescriptive because the answer to that question differs with every community. But the the thing that I will say is that the problem will not resolve itself without some sort of local action. There's a couple of things to be aware of that you you may already be aware of, which are impending funding sources in the broadband space. Specific to the state of Michigan, there's the the Building Michigan Together Plan, which is allocating two hundred and fifty million dollars toward broadband expansion in the state with certain restrictions on how that can be spent. And then a little farther out is part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act called the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, which is allocating forty-two and a half billion dollars nationally toward broadband expansion within the U.S. The important thing to note about both of these is that neither of these funding sources are automatically going to flow toward the unserved areas in in your county. And so now is a very critical time in terms of ensuring that these funding sources do solve the broadband problem that you've identified. And so that the question now is how to incentivize the investment of private providers in your county, and how to incentivize them to to seek out this grant funding. Because providers, you know, there there are a lot of unserved households, not only nationally, but specifically within the state of Michigan. It depends on what numbers you look at, but estimates put that over over a million households in the state don't have access to broadband at home. And so the question becomes, why should providers seek grant funding for the households in your county versus somewhere else? And so you need to provide them with an answer to that question in the form of some kind of incentivization. So I know there's there's been talk of, you know, potentially building a fiber ring to resolve the the lack of backhaul connectivity in these rural areas. And something like that is certainly worth. And something like that is certainly worth talking about. The incentivization there looks like, um, you know, if they build in these areas now, they don't also have to invest in the, the backhaul route to get bandwidth out to the rural areas. So tho- those are the kinds of things I would explore pursuing. Um, and the, the last thing I'll, I'll say about it is it, a lot depends on your conversations with those private providers. Um, the last thing you want to be in is a build it and they will come scenario. Uh, so you want to ensure that you're, you're forming those partnerships on the front end so that whatever scenario you pursue, um, is one that you can be fairly confident that will bear fruit in the end.
Uh, are you a familiar, uh, it's my understanding and uh, that we will have to spend the ARPA funds on certain projects and that uh, the county will have to be in charge of those projects instead of giving money directly to uh, either the provider, uh, the provider or give it to a, a township for their own uh, use. Uh, could, do, do you know the answer to that, that question? Can, you know, does ARPA, can we give ARPA funds directly to another township? Uh, or, or can we, and can we give it to a provider without?
And I'm sorry, those of us on the Zoom just lost contact with the boardroom.
Hang tight, I'm sure they're coming back in.
Glad it's not just me.
Well, I see him logging in.
Townships would like us to give money directly to them, uh, the ARPA funds. Uh, and uh, and I'm sure the broadband, uh, broadband providers would like uh, uh, cash given directly to them. It, it seems to me that, uh, it's my understanding that the county has to have some sort of contract where we are in control of the uh, of the process that happens at the end. Uh, could you uh, 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 talk about what has happened in other places? If you're familiar with that, uh, in the next steps, uh, that we're?
Ye- yes, absolutely. Um, and we were disconnected for a few seconds in the middle, but I heard the beginning and the end. So if, if I miss something, um, just let me know. Um, but I think the question was whether the county can allocate ARPA money to either townships or private providers to um, resolve the lack of broadband coverage. Um, the, the answer is yes, within certain parameters. And you're right, that you, you cannot just award unrestricted funds, um, on the hope that they'll use it to do something constructive. Um, it does need to be um, a- awarded within certain parameters and there needs to be oversight and reporting, um, consistent with the, the ARPA requirements. Um, that said, a, a couple of examples I can bring up. So Berrien County is um, actually an example of working with the townships to use uh, ARPA money to resolve the lack of broadband. And in that case, the, the county has designed a grant program for which only the, the, their townships are eligible to apply for grants. And the townships can then apply for grants to uh, uh, build broadband infrastructure within their own borders. Generally, uh, within a private partnership scenario, the town, rural townships, as you can imagine, um, generally are, are not staffed to uh, be an internet service provider. And so they're partnering with private operators, um, to do this. Um, another example where the uh, the private part, private providers are the uh, the direct partners with the county is my own county, which is Washtenaw County. And so we went through the same data collection project with Merritt and identified about 3,000 households that were, were unserved. And the, the way the county-
Was that, excuse me?
I'm sorry, that's Washtenaw County.
Oh, Washington, thank you.
Your neighbor to the south. Um, and so the, the way that the, the Board of Commissioners chose to resolve the problem in that case was to issue a competitive bid, um, to award funding to private providers to fill in the gaps essentially. And so it ended up with a, a sp- a split award to four different private providers, um, where the ARPA money will go toward um, building infrastructure in these unserved areas. The, uh, to your point about oversight, the county also um, uh, hired a project manager to oversee the uh, not only the award of the funding, but the building of the project over the next several years.
Uh, and one uh, last question. I understand that uh, if um, broadband has to come, it can't come over towers, it has to come through fiber, that's my understanding. And does Livingston County have access to enough uh, broadband to cover Livingston County? Say if we do all this um, infrastructure, is there uh, uh, the uh, flow, proper flow that's coming to Livingston County to uh, actually serve it? Or, or are we going to put so many things out there that uh, we're only going to get slow uh, internet service because we don't have enough power coming into Livingston County?
Um, great question, so let me address the first one first. So um, you know, broadband at the FCC definition of 25 megabits down, three mega- megabits up, absolutely, you can deliver that over, over wireless as well as a wireline technologies like fiber. Um, as we've discussed, uh, a more modern definition of broadband is 100 megabits down, 20 megabits up or even 100 megabit symmetrical, um, which can also be delivered over fixed wireless within certain parameters. Uh, that becomes more sensitive to interference from foliage and topology. Um, that said, the uh, the concern becomes future-proofing. And so most Americans today have access to wireline broadband that uh, provides gigabit download speeds. Uh, at least today, gigabit download speeds are very difficult to obtain using non-line-of-sight wireless technologies. And so um, I forget who made the comment earlier, but it's uh, it's the case where wireless can be a, a pragmatic short-term solution. But for long-term investments in your community, uh, we do recommend wireline uh, technologies, specifically fiber optic cables. Um, to your second question about capacity, um, that, that goes to the nature of fiber optic cables. And so at the company I work for, which is Internet Two, we recently upgraded our network to uh, provide 800 gigabits of uh, bandwidth across each, each fiber optic cable, so each single strand of fiber. Um, so a single strand of fiber running to the county could provide, you know, a, a minimum of, of 800 gigabits. And in reality, there, there are many strands of fiber optic cable that do run to your county. Um, that said, the problem is distributing that bandwidth throughout the county. And in these rural areas, those uh, fiber optic cables don't, don't reach. And so even though the county itself does have access to pa- plenty of bandwidth, the, the challenge becomes distributing it to um, the, not only the rural townships, but then the last mile connections from those, those middle mile fiber lines to individual homes.
Thank you. I believe that's all my questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Helserman. Um, anybody else who hasn't chimed in on questions, have any questions? Commissioner Drick?
Thank you. Am I understanding that the rural areas might be able to get away with 25.3 for a short time? But in the long run, we should be considering that not an option?
That, that is my opinion.
Thank you.
All set, Commissioner?
All set.
Commissioner Zajak?
Uh, thank you. Um, so, so just two things. One, in terms of the survey, I, I think that we, we should definitely always take a trust but verify approach when our directors present us information, um, do what we can to find out if, if that's correct. Uh, though we trust them, we, we, uh, it's our job to verify. And Director Toby from the beginning has told us about how our rural areas are underserved. Um, and, and I think he even talked about the FCC shortfall in terms of the data they presented. Uh, and I've been involved in several conversations with Director Toby, uh, looking at the idea of partners and figuring out what to do next. And, and we made this survey and, or we, we took on this uh, contract to do the survey for purposes of doing that trust but verify. And, and I think upon my review, um, it is confirmed. Director Toby's input initially has been confirmed by the merit study. And, and then I, I took it a bit further and I said, well, let's trust but verify this merit company, who are they, what are they doing? And, and I found several uh, very interesting, and I'll admit Alexis, I didn't get through all your papers, but you wrote a lot of papers on this rural broadband stuff. And um, it's over and over, I saw FCC inadequate, Kansas, Maine, looking at how do we solve these problems? So to answer some of the questions earlier, it seems uh, that uh, uh, we've, we've chosen right partners, at least at this phase of the project. And um, we are, are, are very uh, thankful to Director Toby and to Merritt for helping to confirm, I would say, uh, the, the suspicion that we had. Uh, and so then for me, the question is what's next? And, and we look at W- Washtenaw County, we look at some other partner or other neighboring communities and what they've done. And, and I appreciate the, the, the discussion about uh, forming task force and selecting project managers and open bids. Um, part of our strategy with ARPA as an example is to be strategic with the use. And I think we see that there's a large need, uh, if we compare the, the inadequacy of our, our uh, broadband infrastructure to allow for K through 12 education. We, we saw that as a, a necessity that was not there. They had to go to hotspots, they had to go all these things. And that also came up in some of Alexis's papers about it, hotspots have their own problems. And so we talk about all these things and we, we have to think strategically in my mind, and that was what we did with the merit study. We were of, ahead of the curve, knowing that this was something we had to do. Um, so maybe more micro, there's a long buildup uh, for this uh, question, but more micro in terms of what's next. Is there a recommendation from the merit team on a specific, um, uh, think of, we took the merit study as a, a short-term next step to, to enable us to do something uh, beyond that? What, what is the next thing that we have to do regardless of what the solution is that we select? Whether it's uh, a, a loop that's just the, the, within four miles of everybody or 96%, whatever the, the math is. Um, or if it's something beyond that, what is a necessary uh, step regardless of what, what the final solution is that we can continue moving forward on, uh, to continue to make progress on this important issue?
Well, if I may, uh, you know, the next step here is really to discuss what the options are. We have validated data that is accurate. Um, we are now to a policy decision as to which ways do we want to consider going. Uh, and merit team, feel free to jump in if I uh, veer off course here, if you have some other thoughts. But we have to validate whether we want to take the hands-off approach on this and, you know, choose to let the private sector and market economics, you know, deliver solutions to our residents over time. Or if we want to partner with townships or partner with internet service providers, or if we want to strike out and, you know, con- conceptualize something on our own. We are now at this policy conversation here, uh, in which what are those next steps? What uh, what would you like to know as board members in, in choosing what those next steps may look like? Uh, a number of you have been very involved in the process and conversations. We've stayed in very close communication, uh, with all of you. Some of you have traveled a, a fair distance, uh, to go and investigate these problems here. And so in my own personal opinion, we are at a, a policy point here in which we will need input from you to look at what directions we want to go. And we have a variety of different avenues.
Does the merit team have anything to add? Otherwise I have a follow-up question.
Could someone please, uh, Bob Stovall from the merit team, um, he has a, a couple of things that he's tried to chime in on. He is not able to um, unmute. Do you think you could help him?
Okay, thank you, Brett. Thank, thank you, everyone. Um, yeah, just kind of a follow-up what Chris was saying. Um, and some of the stuff is being said, you know, my experience, my over 30 years experience working at merit and, and working in the, in the Michigan's community and, and, and around the Midwest. Um, we're at the point where, um, if there is a viable economic uh, way to serve a community, they'd be served out. So now our communities, you know, I think this is coming to realization for the folks at this meeting. Now we're talking about communities that, um, is really tough way to make economic justification for our private business. But you know, there could be developing, you know, development plans and working with partnership with private businesses to get, you know, to get our communities served, get it, all of our people served. And, and that's really where we're at now. Um, and, and there was some questions about middle mile, last mile. I, I see, and I had an opportunity to kind of look at, you know, some of the discussions and some of the plans. It, it really, it really doesn't come down to, um, you know, what does the board want to uh, do? Do they want to uh, uh, you have a goal and just, you know, of creating a, a network to each of the, you know, each one of the townships? Uh, or do we want to do something more, more of getting right down to the last mile every house, you know, household? It's really up to you and we, I mean, I think we could help in all these different discussions on, you know, different scenarios, what you would need to look at. But you're really building up that, okay, this is, this is our goal, you know, come up with the goal or, or a set of goals and then, and then we can start collaborating on, on how, how to make that happen.
And, and if I may, you know, this is, this is not an inexpensive problem to have. Uh, fiber optic cabling and, and this type of approach is very expensive, whether it be in the private sector or some sort of public-private partnership. Uh, to run fiber across utility poles, you're looking at 18 to $24,000 per mile plus rental of the, the pole to make it ready. Um, to pl- uh, directionally drill fiber into the ground, like is pretty typical in a community like Howell here. Uh, you're looking at around $66,000 a mile, uh, up to $75,000 per mile, depending on the different layers of the infrastructure in the ground. Um, this is, you know, you, you take a look at the number of roads that we have here in Livingston County. And I believe we're somewhere up around uh, 1,400 miles of road, if I recall correctly. Um, you know, it gives you an idea of how long the utility lines are and, you know, what the distances are to go. And you start to compile that with the dollars that it costs to, to take a fiber optic cable and put it on the poles or to, to push it underground or pull it underground. Um, this is not exactly an easy, easy discussion and easy problem to solve. That's just quick and easy. These things take time. There are state permits, there are uh, railroad and other permits that need to be obtained. It's an expensive process, no matter what we do.
Yeah, and so that's exactly my point in, in that, you know, there's many steps along the way, uh, whether it's engineering drawings with, or it's the county that does it, or if it's a private company that does it. It seems to me, engineering drawings are required. It seems to me that permits are required. It seems to me that there's a lot of things that are, regardless of what the final plan is, there's a required next step, like the merit study. It was required regardless of if we do the Washtenaw plan and we, uh, you know, select four different bidders or if we do the divvy it out to county or divvy it out to township land. Um, in, in any regard, I don't, I won't get into my opinion on which of those is better or not. I think too many cooks in the kitchen causes problems, especially in a complex uh, uh, technology like broadband. But um, I guess my point though is, um, yes, it's a policy decision, but none of us know. I mean, we're not FCC experts, we're not PhDs, we're not uh, in the business. So i- i- I suppose what I'm interested in is the opinion of experts, whether it's uh, you know, Alexis, whether it's uh, from Washtenaw County, whether it's from Merritt as a company, whether maybe it's everybody and then we decide what the best uh, for Livingston County is and, and go from there. But we, we, we will struggle to make a policy decision because it will be ring around the rosy frankly, until we know what the best um, technical solution would look like. In, in a perfect world for satisfying this 45% of 41% of the houses- technical solution would look like in a perfect world for satisfying this forty five percent of forty one percent of the houses. Not being able to supply or not being able to have access to their to broadband internet so that they can do their homework at home. That to me is a bigger, that is, that is bigger than a question of is the government going to provide the service or not? That's a, is is are our constituents in a position to live their life in the way that they should be, which is having education, being able to work from home, being able to do whatever else they choose to do. That perhaps is a necessity of their life. Call, I mean, call nine one one. I've I know there's cell phone issues when the bottom southwest corner, south, yeah, west corner of our county where if you don't have a landline, you might have problems calling nine one one. So those are all to me, you know, issues that rise above a question of government service or not. So let's look at the solution of what is the best technical solution to solve that problem and then we'll figure out how how it works and how who we partner with and those kinds of things, but my my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board, but my opinion is that we know the best technical solution, then we can say, okay, well, we can't do that. Or we can do that, or we can do something else, or we're going to get the money from here, or whatever the case is. So so to me, that's the input that I need and I let my colleagues make their own decision, but I I need that information so that I can render an opinion on what we do next, but the the really important thing is in my mind, what is the necessary next step? Not in terms of a final plan, but something we know we have to do regardless of what the plan is. And we can keep moving if we do that thing. I don't know what it is, but.
Thanks.
Anybody else who had question, hasn't got a chance for questions that wishes to ask questions? I I have, I'm going to chime in. I haven't had any questions, so I've taken some notes here. I don't need the data now, but so a question, the willingness to pay the range was like twenty five to a hundred bucks or something like that. Is that data available, broken down geographically? So the areas that are under underserved. It's a, is there any?
Indeed, yeah. So you actually have all of that raw data and Sandon has been exploring that as well. Your willingness to pay data is also embedded in the GIS files. And should you should be able to layer that over. There's also breakouts of willingness to pay in the top line report that are non geographic, but they are linked to other statistics. So indeed, it can be, we do not have a file ready for you right now. I, but it is available geographically in the in the files of the county house, indeed.
Okay, returning to my colleague Commissioner Zajak. Line of question, what is the next step? So if I'm listening to the to the conversation, I'm concluding that am I right to conclude that we have done all that we can do? That there's nothing more to do and and now we're ready to make a, we have to make a policy decision before we start investing money in doing engineering drawings or whatever. Is that, is my conclusion correct?
That is accurate, Mr. Chair.
I'm curious how other counties are doing in terms of the progress they're making. I'm kind of wondering where Livingston County is. Are we, are we doing well? Are we way behind? Are we way ahead? I mean, can can somebody give me a sense of that?
I'll ask, I'll defer to the merit team on that because they have a better sampling.
Sure, I can take that one. So as Brett said, merit has engaged with, I think almost a dozen counties for broadband data collection. And Livingston County is ahead of the pack, we'll we'll put it that way. There are several counties from this cohort that that are ahead of where Livingston County is. Washtenaw County has, you know, made these RFP awards and are have executed contracts. Marion County is doing these grant awards. Other counties have some other things going on. But the the fact that you have completed the data collection at all puts you ahead of, you know, ninety percent of the the rest of the counties in the state. And even within the counties that have done the data collection, having this level of meaningful dialogue at the board level speaks very highly of your 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 concern for this issue for your constituents. I want to go back to, I think it was a comment from Public Comment regarding, you know, the the urgency for this issue. And the it's no secret that the in the current environment, supply chain issues have snarled up all kinds of things. And the broadband industry is no exception. So lead times for things like fiber optic cables. And, you know, everything associated with the construction of this kind of infrastructure has been pushed out either either months or years in some cases. And so it all that to say, it's to your advantage that you are this far along in the process. But there is also a sense of urgency to continue the momentum that you have to to reach a conclusion. But while I have the floor, I will mention another component to a question that was raised by one of the commissioners regarding, you know, what what to do next? And, you know, that that's part of what we we do at merit is we have something called the broadband Pathfinder program. And as I said earlier, it's it's not unfortunately a prescriptive process where I can give you one best solution, but it comes from community dialogue like this. That's an area where we're we're happy to stay engaged as you navigate those decision points. And yeah, I think they're they're showing a slide of how the process generally works. You're currently in the in the planning stage and hopefully moving toward the getting funded stage. But as you move between these stages, there there are decision points to be made and that's where having some some guidance from the Pathfinder program can hopefully be helpful.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand. In the presentation, there were references made to no internet. That X percentage had no internet. Is that no internet or no broadband internet?
That's no internet. That's no internet whatsoever. So when we are classifying the internet, you can see right here. Zero to ten percent have twenty five three, eleven to twenty five have twenty five three and so forth. And we did also note there's another slide later on Alexis, where we had the availability by the numbers. We we did see here thirteen percent more homes have some connectivity at speeds lower than broadband. So when we say no internet, we mean no connectivity. And then we've also got some breakouts for those who have less than twenty five three.
Oh, thank you. Just a few more questions. You know, there was, you know, part of the increased need for broadband is because of schools shutting down or students being kept from going to school they and and learning online. To what degree do schools have money to kick in for internet? I mean, I I truly believe that they should be kicking in, that they were a huge cause in part of the issues that we have. If anybody would care to field that question, what what funding do they have? I I know they have Esser money, but beyond that, I honestly think they have some responsibility. My question is, are is anybody here aware of funding that they might be able to kick in?
So I I don't disagree with the sentiment. The the challenge is that schools tend to be fairly restricted in how they can spend funding on residential broadband. So while we all recognize that having home connectivity is a critical part of the educational experience today. Schools in general have a hard time being able to spend that that funding on connections to individual people's houses. So while the schools can explore some options within E rate specifically that might be able to contribute to some solutions, they they're unfortunately not going to be able to be a major source of funding.
And to add on to that comment, Mr. Feynman discussed the the E rate possibility. Currently with Livingston County's public safety fiber optic cable. We are currently utilizing the E rate discounts, which is partnering with the school districts. We've partnered with LES A and Followville Community Schools. And that lowers the cost for the DTE pole rental. It is also going to be assisting us in the future, starting May first. On fiber maintenance and lowering the costs on that, which can be very costly part of the process. So basically that means that the fiber that goes to the schools, the schools direct. We would get discounts on potential build out costs, maintenance costs and pole rental from the utility providers. Is that accurate, Mr. Feynman?
That's correct, yep.
Question, I'll I'll yield the floor to my colleagues. You know, there's been discussion about this trunk line and, you know, providing, you know, public safety access internet to the areas that don't have a Unidilla, you know, for 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 one. And then also providing us resiliency in our own system. So that's going to add X amount of miles of of fiber. Do we have a figure that we would apply that says for, you know, on a maintenance cost that it's going to cost? It currently costs us X dollars per mile to maintain fiber over the course of a year. Do we have that figure?
I do not have that figure at this point in time. Over the past few years, we have kind of collected those. It's been absorbed by both the county and LES A for those maintenance costs, but they they vary considerably. If you have a rodent that chews into the cable. It might cost you anywhere between, you know, three and eight thousand dollars for the fiber repair, depending on it. Over the past four months, we had an electrical client come down on the fiber and kind of charge it and create a bit of a wave and about three thousand foot of cable that needed to be replaced and that bill was upwards of twenty nine thousand. The year before, we had a number of different rodent damages that were in the three to five thousand dollar range. It just really depends on environmental and critter issues, we'll say.
I'd be curious getting a number that says if we currently have a hundred, I'm just using numbers, a hundred miles of cable and it and over the last whatever ten years, on average, we spent whatever a hundred thousand dollars to understand what that term and then use that as extrapolate to a perm out, because I look at that as a ongoing cost to the county and I know my myself and I believe some of my other colleagues are desirous of minimizing the ongoing costs. These are one time dollars and so if we have understanding of what those ongoing costs on it sometime in the future, I'd appreciate it.
We will work to try to do that. We'll also reach out to the E rate consultants for the schools and see if they can assist. Perhaps Mr. Stovall can assist with that as well, seeing that he maintains over four hundred miles of cable.
Four thousand.
I'm sorry, four thousand. I misplaced my my zeros. Can you add anything to that, Bob?
Oh, yeah, yeah, those are all good things to consider and and, you know, we can, we can work with you some numbers on what it costs per you know, what we're averaging per mile for aerial infrastructure versus underground. Some things and 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 also some techniques to minimize your operational costs.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you on that, Chris.
We've had presentation in the Q and A and it's we've been confused hour and fifteen minutes, which is fine. I I we're going to go around for us follow up questions, but I I would ask my colleagues to consider limiting to their most important question or questions. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. So we're going to get into philosophical issues very quickly on this as far as who is going to pay for what or who should pay for what. So before we get there, how long do you need to bring to us your top three or four or five means to get a successful broadband plan together? Whether it's public, private, whether it's complete government, whether it's
Based on, based on the research, the knowledge that I've collected over the past eleven to fourteen months, tapping into the merit teams experience. I would recommend that we look at a public private partnership as a means of an avenue. Does that help you, Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Right, but I want to know what other avenues we have and then then we're going to have to get into some kind of philosophical discussion, I'm sure, as to how how deep the county wants to go into this, etc. But I think we need to know your best recommendations on options.
I can probably bring that back to the next board meeting to bring back possible solutions.
Anybody else? Commissioner Gross, excuse me.
Question for Mr. Feynman. A while ago, you used the term fixed wireless. Is that a euphemism for microwave?
It is not a euphemism for microwave. It is, you know, the definition of fixed wireless is a wireless internet connection that you you can't take with you. So that can be various frequencies of of radio delivery, could be including microwave. But a lot of them are actually what's called non light of line of sight technologies, so that they can, they can travel through trees. But anything delivered wirelessly that you you don't bring with you like your cell phone?
A long time ago in my work career at General Motors. We established a microwave link from a number of General Motors assembly plants into our data centers in Warren and later in Auburn Hills and and those and also the GM building. They worked very satisfactorily and and I know you folks are, excuse the term biased towards towards cable. But do you have any comments relative to the possibilities of the efficiencies, if you will, of of going with with microwave? And in the secondary, I've gotten phone calls and emails from some of my constituents. And they say we should go to satellites. And so I'm wondering if anybody has any thoughts in that area.
So I'm happy to chime in. Certainly, as I mentioned earlier, wireless can be considered as a pragmatic solution. As I mentioned, the 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 concern that should be considered is future proofing and future scalability. Generally, the the non line of sight wireless technologies, you know, they they may be able to reach the hundred megabit threshold, depending on the situation on the ground, but they they have trouble scaling out much beyond that. And the 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 concern is they will always be in order of magnitude behind the the wireline technologies. Regarding the satellite point, so you actually raise a great thing to be aware of. The historical satellite technology, not to get too far in the weeds, was geosynchronous and had a large delay based on how high the satellites were in orbit. So they were were not a a great broadband solution. There are new satellite technologies called low earth orbit. The most popular one is called Starlink from Elon Musk and those satellites are very, very low to the earth. And so they they don't have a lot of delay and they can deliver a better broadband experience. And so that's absolutely something that should be considered. The challenge with that is the the number of people that can be served in an individual cell, as they call the areas for the the individual satellites is finite. And so well, we are relatively rural in the the Livingston and in the Washtenaw County areas. We're actually a a lot more urban than the the real target markets for these technologies, which is more like Alaska or Wyoming or the the places where wireline technology is just never going to come. So the the capacity for the Starlink system in our area, it it's going to help some people, but it's not going to be able to solve the problem for everyone.
Thank you for that information.
Commissioners AJak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a follow up to Commissioner Smith's comments and request, Director Toby, I would just encourage you to poll the merit team and do it in a way and and others, obviously, you know, AMCOM and others that we've worked with already. And 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 poll it in a way that is not constricted by regular government bureaucracy and red tape and all this. This is a perfect world if we're if we're a corporation and we had whatever funds are needed and we wanted to go, what would we do? What are those options? And, you know, we look at things like the 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 Starlink as an opportunity that might look different than broadband. We look at public private partnerships. We look at the P, I call it the piecemeal effect where township A has this and township B has that and never the two shall cross and and what happens when they should. We look at all those different scenarios. We look at all those different scenarios. We look at, you know, merit as a as a corporation providing their input. We look at academics perhaps providing their input. We look at all the different areas of input, and I just would like to see the the vast, how broad of a out-of-the-box ideas can you come with? And and we'll then narrow it for what's practical or what's not practical, and we'll we'll do that. But, you know, if you had the keys to the castle, I mean, that's really Commissioner Smith's point, I don't know if that's what he wanted to see, but within his question, that's what I would like to see, so that we can do our our very best to address the issue that is before us in a way that is expedient, because I see us, you come to with all these ideas, we'll look at it perhaps, or you'll look at it, or merit will look at it, and we'll say, inside of all these ideas, ideas, you know, we're going to do something, and if the something we're going to do is at least the trunk line, well, to me now, that answers my previous question of what the necessary next step is. And if we could then branch off and do last mile with extra funding from the state or the feds or wherever, that's that's something that can be kind of built on to what that minimum is. So, you know, when you come with all these different ideas, even if it is public-private, or if it's public-only or private-only, if we see what that piece is that is next, that we can get the ball rolling on as the bare minimum, that is of vital importance to me, so that we can serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Houserman?
Just a follow-up. I would like for somebody to provide kind of templates for public-private contracting. And what contracting you would need to do public-public with county to townships? Have a, I'd like templates for those agreements to if we look at the templates and we say, yeah, this looks workable, or we say, no, that's too complicated, or or we don't like all the ramifications of it, but if we don't have a template to work with, we can't discuss the idea any further, so.
Commissioner, as a point of clarity, are you looking for the legal constraints around those? Because that's something that's going to take a little bit longer to
Yeah, how would, you know, how does that work? Okay, so, so, so I Osko Township, they have they have probably two-thirds not covered, and they figure it's going to be about $1 million or more to do that. So the question is, you know, you know, they have a $500,000, and they would like us to come along with the rest of it. How would that, what kind of paperwork would we need to sign? Because they're pretty much, I think, locked in with Surf Broadband at this point, and I know the Cockta Township is has a relationship with Surf Air. How would, how would those, what kind of paperwork would we need? Not that we need all of the, you know, the T's crossed and the I's dotted, that sort of thing, but what what would it look like?
Commissioner Houserman, I'm thinking, are you, would it? If I were to try to answer that question, I think I would present, you know, contracts that other governmental bodies have signed, you know, is that what you're looking for?
That's sort of thing, so that we because my understanding was we were limited by ARPA to do things like that. And so what is what is allowable? And we want to do that, you know, or do we want to own the line and rent it out? Or how 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 is that all going to work, so? So, but I like templates, if we could get them, at least rough templates.
Yeah, I'll wrap up the conversation and we'll move on in the agenda. I, you know, appreciate all your work, Director Toby, and and the work of merit. It's been very helpful. And in, you know, I I do concur, it is, you know, it's up to the policymaking body to make a decision that, you know, as far as what, then allowing the engineering to happen after that. One one thing I've concluded, and this will be my last comment, is if we look at what the FCC has done and and use that as a model and go 180 degrees, we probably would do pretty well. So anyway, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Again, thank you all for the opportunity to go out and pursue this. I think that what we have delivered is a model survey and good information with great cooperation and collaboration with all of our partners, our staff, and the community. And I think this is something that we can all be very, very proud of. So thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up on the agenda is item number 11. It's Resolution for Consideration, Resolution 2022-04-055. It's a resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 2023 Community Corrections Plan and grant application from Court Central Services. Is there a motion? Support Houserman. Motion by Commissioner Zajak, support by Commissioner Houserman. This was discussed in committee, but would ask if any commissioners want any further information, background information, or have questions on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 12 is Accounts Payable Report. We have claims dated April 19th, 2022, looking for a motion to approve the claims.
So moved, Griffiths.
Support Smith.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Smith. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Claims are paid. Payables dated April 2nd through April 15th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the payables?
So move Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Plank. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We've paid our bills. Item number 13 is our second and final call to the public. Is there anybody wishing to address the board for two minutes? Mr.
One thing that I did not see in merit study was the cost per megabit that we pay in out in Conway, at least, or that was not included in there. But I can say that for 25.3, 25 megabits, down three up, we pay $105 is the premium for that. It's now to give you a little bit of contrast here, that is $4 per megabit. Now, just in town, a gigabit is about maybe $65 under WOW Cable, so that's about 60 cents per megabit. And if you look at the upload, it's $35 per month. So the longer we take with this, and this is the top-tier plan, by the way, that this that this ISP offers for fixed wireless, and this is our sole provider that we can access. The longer we take with this, so we will be draining our 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 residents' wallets, the longer we take with terms of expansion in terms of value, because you can get that, what, 40 times more value in another place. Now, look at if a person is looking at housing valuation, what are they going to think of that house? Do I want to buy that house? Does my generation want to buy that house? That has slow internet, it's not adequate. And but aside from that, and then community provider engagement.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Yep. I want to say that Surf Broadband Solutions has been great in terms of community engagement, having a Facebook group and keeping things clear. I think that the board should have some sort of subcommittee or page, just to keep things clear on what the progress is of these funds and being allocated for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Fosdick.
Mark Fosdick, Kahakto Township. I would just like to say the presentation was excellent. I think the merit study provides a lot of information. I took a lot of notes. And I'm just going to make three comments. One, I think the response that you got from Livingston County shows that broadband is an important issue with the residents within this township. And the ARPA funds are primarily designed to help with that along the way. I know under the ARPA regulations, there's a incentive for $50 for low-cost people to actually apply. The provider of the internet service has to certify that they provided that service per month. I have no idea how long that'll last. I think your best solutions in terms of policy issues are going to be probably very, depending on the township and where they're at. You know, they may want to plug in certain areas here. You may want to, like our township, we would probably prefer contracting with Surf Broadband to finish out at least our underserved. Ultimately, our goal is to do the rest of the whole county. I like the the comment about local grants, maybe with Township Bureau provide that sort of a permission or grant along with a provider that would provide the service. And the county would also help us along that way in terms of the monitoring and regulation and and what needs to be done along that line. And with that, I'll conclude. I have a lot more comments, and I'll be talking with Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room before we go to Zoom? Looks like Adam Bates, if you give your name and township residence, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. My name's Adam Bates. I'm a resident in Conway Township, and I'm also the market manager for Surf Broadband Solutions for all of Michigan. And I I just wanted to say thank you for gathering the information that was very thorough and what I believe and agree is very accurate information. I, a couple of points of clarification. Freedom Net Solutions was acquired by Surf Broadband Solutions in November of 2018. So merit merits information, if you see Freedom Net under there, that that's also Surf Broadband. We started as a fixed wireless provider, actually in 2005 in Livingston County. We've done well as a fixed wireless provider, but as as many of you have noted, that we have some pretty significant limitations on fixed wireless. And so we have transitioned completely to a fiber design network. We have already in-place agreements in Iosco Township as well as Kahakto Township. Commissioner Houserman, I I know you asked for some sample contracts. I believe Supervisor Fosdick and I would be willing to share that agreement that we have in place. And I I think I'll stop right there. I've got several more comments, but again, like Mark Fosdick said, we'll be working with Chris Toby closely going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Ms. Dobbin-Meyer, if you give us your township and you'll have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Judy Dobbin-Meyer from Genoa Township, and I wanted to thank the board for moving forward with this report. We had urged it a couple of years ago because we knew from Washtenaw County's experience that the FCC data is inaccurate, and I'm glad we have confirmed that and ascertained the problem here in Livingston County. Going forward, I would urge you to be future-thinking. Don't settle for 25.3. Insist on 100 at least. Plan for the future. Include everybody. Don't leave out any parts of the county, as you did with Unidilla and the fiber optic 911 system. Everybody in and nobody out. And think about that last mile. If it could be as many as five miles, we got to do better than that. And make sure the money from ARPA, you know, we need services. Tax cuts would be nice, but we need services. And there won't be another pot of money like this come along for a while. So focus on services to the people, because obviously they are insisting on it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close the call to public and look for a motion to enter closed session to discuss a written legal opinion from civil counsel per MCL 15.268.
So moved, Griffiths.
Support.
A motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Zajak. Do we need a roll call on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith. Yes. Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Reader.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Houserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioners Ajax.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Houserman, support by Commissioner Griffith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or adjourned?